With the work session, I'll open it up with letting Mark start and then turn it over to Bill. And we'll...
Well, I don't have a lot to start on other than this is the, you know, kind of the real first work session that's going to be related to the budget process for this coming year. You know, since Bill has been here, we've worked to refine and perfect this CIP. And we're doing a pretty good job of following it. And really appreciate that the board reviews this on a regular basis and that we try to stick to it as far as our funding goes because it helps us plan and budget out five years in advance for any major projects. And as we all know, some of these projects take two years before in just design before we can get to the part of the building.
Okay. And for clarification, just because we do use a lot of acronyms and things, can you please specify what is the CIP?
It's the Capital Improvement Plan.
And then what is its purpose?
To budget for five years and anticipate projects that are going to be happening over the next five years and then to identify funding. And then we also identify projects that are out there that are longer than five years out, but until they make it into the five-year plan, we don't start the process of design and budget.
Correct. I understand. And sometimes we have things that happen that pull things that are past the five-year plan that have to be brought in immediately, correct?
Yes. This is our working plan. And like anything, when you're five years out, sometimes bridges fail that you weren't anticipating or roads need improvement because of failure, whatever. So sometimes they have to be moved up in there. But whenever that occurs, then something that's in this plan has to be pushed out several years to...
Right. I just wanted to get that clarification done as well, that sometimes things have to be moved. Okay. Bill, you're up. Thank you.
All right. So commissioners, we always try to do a very diligent job of putting together the five-year CIP. Just so everybody has a clear understanding of what we're looking at here today, the main two categories of funding are going to be your special highway fund. The special highway fund is generated from the general tax revenues the county collects, and that is allocated towards bridge replacement projects. The sales tax fund is from obviously the sales tax collections, and it is set aside for road improvement projects. So we have basically the 220 special highway that's a maintenance fund and then a road improvement fund with a sales tax fund. The yearly expected revenues for those funds are based upon current funding for the special highway fund, which is right now between local service and road and bridge is approximately $1.4 million in the highway fund is what we're setting aside for bridge replacements. And then the sales tax fund, those numbers are off of our financial advisors' projected sales tax revenue moving forward. And so the sales tax fund revenues do increase over time. Hopefully that does stay true with the economy, but that is what it's based upon. And so this year, for the 2023 bridge replacements, we do have three bridge replacements that we're hopeful to get out. The one, ST 100 on Fairmount Road, is being led by KDOT, who is the AD20 grant for the off-system bridge project. It is just west of 175th Street. And that project is being led this month. I believe it opens at the end of this week even by KDOT, and so we will know who the contractor is on that. The E48 bridge is also a grant from local projects. It is the local bridge program grant, and they did allocate $150,000 towards the cost of that bridge. That is on 251st Street, north of 192 Highway. We anticipate bidding that in May. We have full right-of-way acquisition complete and utilities relocated for that project. We have to get our reimbursement in before August for the $150,000. HP36 is not quite where we'd like to see it be as far as design and acquisition. That is the bridge that came up in our bridge inspections this past year that was kind of a last-minute addition based upon the review of a new consultant. A new consultant's been doing a very good job, and they did downgrade about 79 of our bridges, which I think was well overdue based upon the history that you guys have seen here in the past. So that bridge, we are hopeful to bid by July, maybe June, but we do have to complete right-of-way acquisition, and we are expecting the design to be in our hands with the documents we need for that. It could get pushed if we get too late into the fall. We don't want to close 187th Street there at Stranger Road. Ideally, we wouldn't close during harvest, but I don't know with the co-op and the road and bridge services both on 187th Street, I don't know if there is really a good time to close 187th Street, but it is in dire need of replacement, where it's going to be downgraded to a three-ton bridge and then moved to a closure list, so we do need to move on that immediately. We have the County Route 5 improvement projects. We have right-of-way acquisition that we are responsible for on that project. There are a lot of fences. There is a very nice wrought iron fencing gate that's going to be expensive, but we are moving forward with that project for acquisition this year. We do have a number of projects, so everything below that middle highlighted line are the future design projects and the year that we hope to do construction during. And so we do have, obviously, we have the T-34 and A-49, bridges that were designed by Benish. I have placed those in the CIP to be reviewed. We are 0 for 3 with our bridges that we have worked with Benish on, and we are currently awaiting a response to a demand email that was sent to them regarding the latest bridge. And so I think it would probably behoove the county to at least consider setting some money aside whether we ask for reimbursement from Benish based upon their history or from the findings of that, but we probably ought to have those bridges looked at before we construct them. I think there is a cost savings greater than the cost of review from going from an aluminized structure to a steel structure. I'm not sure if it was prior to my joining Leavenworth County, but when you weld those aluminized joints, you burn the aluminization off of them anyway.
That's correct.
And so I don't know what the galvanized aluminized material adds in overall length of bridge because your critical points are at the welding joints, and that's where it's going to be where you burned off that aluminization anyway. So the overall structure might not rust, but your joints are still going to have the same issues whether you have a steel or aluminum structure, and the cost is significantly different. And so if we went in a review of those plans, I would recommend that we go to a steel structure to save the money for the review cost, and I don't think that we greatly reduce the lifespan of the bridge at all. We may not even reduce it at all. And so we will be continuing to look at F-46 and going into that process, but we have K-19 that was identified by the Finney Turnip Seed inspections here north of Leavenworth, and we need to acquire that right-of-way, and that design's in completion. And as you can see, I don't know what detail in length of time we want to go through each individual year, but we are anticipating the bidding of County Route 30 sometime around Thanksgiving with the dirt work hopefully being winter work and some, we do possibly, depending upon the water district's failure to locate their line accurately. We may or may not need to relocate a portion of the water line, but we can do the box culvert work on that section of road in the winter as well. And so we can get that project started from Hollingsworth to Dempsey near the end of the year, first of next year. This afternoon and tomorrow, we will be writing our fourth cost share grant application and submitting that to KDOT for that project. We are going to submit for a million dollars.
What percentage is that?
About 25%.
Tables are flipped. Are we sure we can afford this without the AD20 match? I mean, this is a county route. We should have got funding for it, in my opinion. It's a county route, so...
Well, let me ask you this. When do you, in my barstool, you rent these every year and make adjustments to them? Or how do you lock in? What's your procedure? Because I know some of them, we have some companies that we had gone out back and looked at again. When you bring them back to us, is there a change in the year that we're looking at? Or do you try to stick as close to the previous year's funding because of that?
We try to stick as close to the previous year's CIP as possible. We had had a discussion last year about County Route 30. If we paid for it in its entirety, we would have ran the sales tax at the time. Prior to inflation, we were completing the project nearly at zero, the sales tax dollars left remaining, or maybe even we would have been in a deficit of a couple hundred thousand. The cost has obviously gone up probably 20% since that discussion occurred, but if we don't bid it until, if we don't do a sales tax project this year, except for acquisitions and some designs and the regional transportation study, we will have adequate funds next year to build the entirety of the project in 2024. So whether we get funding or not. So really, the only shift was that project to 2024, to 2023, based upon that last year's discussion. The bridges have moved a little bit, but not much since the 2023. We've added some 2025 bridges, but to further that discussion, I anticipate that we'll have a further downgrading of the bridges from discussions with Finney and Turnip Seed. They didn't want to make it look like the sky was falling. They took over from our previous finish inspections, but they did downgrade slightly 79.
It was falling.
And they said that we should anticipate further reductions in our ratings and some bridges being classified as in need of replacement immediately.
Well, that's what concerns me, the bridges or the new road construction.
And the priorities.
Well, it should be.
To that point, in the back of your packet, we have two sections on bridges, two pages on bridges. So we have bridge replacement by condition rating. So obviously, we tried to color code the bridge condition sheet here. Green has the design completed. Orange is under design currently, and pink is currently in the CIP to go into design in the next five years. But as you can see, we do have E-08, F-55, K-03. And what you're not seeing in this, and I try to run the funds, I assume that we want to build our projects as soon as possible because they never get cheaper than they are the day that you can build them. So I try to run these funds as tight as possible without, with a little bit of a conservancy of not being in the red. But there is a little bit of money at the $1.4 million allocation amount in the 220 fund, but I reached out to the city of Lansing regarding the bridge on Nine Mile Creek that we have the agreement on to see when they had it in their CIP or when they planned on replacing that bridge. And I was informed that they don't have a CIP, and they applied for funding, which we were aware of last year for a grant, didn't get it. And they may or may not apply for future funding, and they did not know when they wanted to build that. So we have to leave some allocated monies towards that structure as it's floating out there in the wind, and it's like a 12-ton bridge. So eventually, it will get downgraded to where school bus can't go across it, and then that's when, I assume, the city's going to take.
Well, the road being improved is the only thing they have, so it's only a matter of time. I mean, they've done some repairs on it, but it's an old bridge.
It's an old bridge, and it is in a high-traffic roadway, so...
Now, D-18?
Yeah, D-18. D-16, sorry, D-16.
Is it D-16?
Yeah, I said nine miles. It's actually seven mile creek.
Okay.
It's in this load rating. I left it in the condition rating. It is not in the CIP, but I anticipate in the next five years that the city of Lansing will probably ask us to fulfill our portion of that agreement. But more concerning than this sheet, because this sheet, under the bridge replacement by condition rating, the condition ratings are what Finney and Turnip Seed has gone ahead and pretty immediately let us know are going to be reduced. Maybe more concerning because it affects school traffic greatly with school buses, is our posted load rating sheet here. So we have 44 bridges with a posted load of 15 tons or less, and that is approximately a third of our bridge inventory in the entire county that is at 15 tons or less. So as you can see, we do have some of these bridges, the HP51, R-50, SH-33, and SH-61 that are not quite in design. We have a few of these down here at the bottom that are rated poor but are still posted at 15 tons, and that's due to structure type. But I'm anticipating a huge reduction in HP51. In the future, it is a concrete arch structure that has a chance for us crap across the entire structure, and so it doesn't have redundant safety features built into that bridge. And so that's why HP51 was moved into the CIP, is it is not considered a fraction of a critical bridge, but the type of cracking that is across the, it's like horizontally going across an arch deck. It has the possibility of sheer failure, so I expect that bridge to be severely downgraded and is a cut-through road between Tom and Oxy Road and 187th Street, I believe. It's on the map, I think, at that rate. It's Tom and Oxy Road and 187th. So anyway, we have the map that you guys are aware of, and it identifies the project, the funding source, and the year of construction. I think that's a very helpful tool whenever this CIP is...
We don't have the map.
I do. I think it's about three.
Oh, there it is.
I guess you're mapping it sideways, so I can see it a little better.
Gee, let's see if we can make it smaller.
So we do have for later this year and into next year, we have 14 culverts that we are replacing with the ARPA funds. So to the discussion earlier that Commissioner Stephen brought up about allocation of ARPA funds, we did pay for E-18 this past year with ARPA funds, and we paid for F-46 with ARPA funds. We have in the CIP the $2 million that's allocated to the base here, 155th Street project. We have the two additional bridges, the T-34 and A-49, and then we have 14 culverts that we're hoping, of those 14 culverts, we have six of them that are going to be constructed by, that are concrete-type culverts that are box culverts that are going to be constructed by a contractor. And we have eight culverts that'll be 96-inch pipe to 48-inch pipe that will be installed by county crews. But we do have them under design for right-of-way acquisition and permitting because we have to have all of our permits.
Boxes are going to be precast?
Yes, they will be precast, don't you think?
Mr. Stephen has a question.
As far as moving forward on the box culverts, are we putting them on a spreadsheet with a schedule for moving forward? I mean, my understanding was those weren't on any kind of a schedule for being updated as we move along. Is that now, is that something you've done or in the process of doing?
Well, yes, I would say that we're in the process. We have identified, so we were now, obviously, you know that three years ago, we didn't have any inspections that had ever been completed on those, and we didn't have a five-year CIP period.
Right.
And so we built the CIP, we did the inspections. We had approximately 40 culverts that we found that they rated as in poor condition of some sorts. We looked at each one of those. Some of them had just a lot of stuff and stuck in on them that we were able to pull out, just debris, and we did that work. And so we've identified these as the 14 worst culverts in the county. And then moving forward, we will be identifying of those remaining 35 that were rated poor, what amount we want to set aside for those.
Okay.
We have the culverts in here through 2026, but we shifted the priority from the box culvert structures less than 20 feet to the bridges in the CIP just because unless we're going to, as a board, you make a decision to allocate more than $1.4 million, there isn't financial capacity to put a bunch of extra structures into the CIP.
But I think it's really important that the public knows, and a really positive thing that the county's done is using the ARPA funds to do this important maintenance, you know?
It's all because the can was kicked down the road. The bottoms are rusted out of these pipes.
Box culverts are really, there's some box culverts that are in really poor condition.
Rebar hanging.
Rebars hanging off of the sidewalls and falling off of them. They don't get load-rated, and they don't get inspected. A culvert between eight, usually a culvert that doesn't get bigger than 96 inches or anything. So from eight foot to 20 foot is not considered a bridge, and those are usually concrete structures. And so those eight-to-12, 20-foot structures, we have 175 over in the county, and we need to be on at least a every two or three-year inspection cycle on those to get a really good grip on them. But I don't believe they've ever been in any type of replacement schedule.
Well, just when they failed, they failed.
Yeah, however.
And a lot of them did poor concrete, flow fill in the bottom, in the bottom, because they wouldn't fund it. Patch it up, kick it down the road.
It's just a positive thing that...
But beyond the 14 that we have in the CIP currently, we do not have any additional ones just based on the prioritization of bridges over these structures, but at the same time, we, you know, we'll end up in a reaction area if we don't keep an eye. The 14 we have are, that's a good number to start with, and we chose high-volume roads. We have a couple on 206th Street south of Tom and Oxy. We have two on Eisenhower east of Tom and Oxy Road. And so those are four of the six major contractor information structures.
Two on Eisenhower east of...
We mean west of...
West. I was going to say, we just got nothing to do in that road.
East of 187th.
What'd you say the total number was?
14.
We have 313 large culverts.
Okay.
And...
It was about 120 because they found more.
Found more that wasn't on the list.
That wasn't on the list.
And then you got your 145 bridges, so...
So I think the question is, are they on the CIP or are they on a replacement schedule? And the answer is no, because there's no funding for that. Should they be? Yes, they absolutely should be. Otherwise, they fall in the creek and the road's closed until we can get out there.
And a lot of times, it takes a while to get the culvert that size. You just don't go...
Right.
It's not budgeted for.
And especially if it's lost.
I think most people call those bridges because they're eight-to-20 feet, but just categorically, they're not bridges in the KDOT's...
I guess we'll wait till we get to the road part.
And then, I guess, to bring you to the road part and to address Commissioner Smith's question, I try not to administratively put projects onto the CIP. We have enough projects that you guys have directed staff to look at or to enter into design, like Dempsey to 4H Road on County Route 30, that the funding allocation amounts are pretty well exhausted by the projects that we have in the CIP, so we just prioritize them by as soon as we can build them. When we have the money, we're going to build the ones. Obviously, after the board's direction, we can change those, delay projects moving around. But we do currently have the plans complete and ready for construction from Hollingsworth to Dempsey on County Route 30, and we have the topography and engineering is ongoing for the design from Dempsey to 4H Road. That's a two-and-a-half-mile stretch of roadway.
One thing we've done in the past, like with 158th Street, we said if we get matching funding, then that moves up on the CIP.
On that, to that point, we have the two grants that I applied. One through the High Risk Rural Roads Program, which identified Tom and Oxy Road. We have the one for south of Stranger Creek. The next highest crash volume area that's most likely to get funded by the state is the section north, and so we applied for funding for the next section of Tom and Oxy Road. After that, if we ever get funded for that, that application is still pending, so we could be asked to set aside. That's a 90-10 grant, and so we don't have to cover 10% of it. But we also applied for the intersection. They have a new, with some federal money, the state has a highway safety intersection program, so we applied for the Tom and Oxy Road, 171st.
Or 75th.
75th. So, yeah, they, those two projects are sitting out there. They're not in the CIP because they wouldn't be projects if we don't get funding. So that goes back to you always want to have a little bit of cash reserves in those accounts because we do want to be able to apply for funding. We'll apply for the cost share program.
But you've got to have the projects designed. They've got to be on the shelf. We've got to fund that. We've got to continue to fund it. You don't know how much money we missed out on by not having projects on the shelves. You know, there was a pretty good road program, what was it, 2000?
2008.
2008. We didn't have any projects on the shelf. We missed it, you know?
We missed it.
They wouldn't fund it.
Well, we're paying for projects now that I believe grant opportunities were available for.
Available, we have them designed.
Yeah, because we could have had a grant, AD20 or 90-10 on 158th Street, and I believe the county around 2012 passed on a grant that had been received for the section of County Route 30 that I believe is going to cost around $4.5 million.
It was a million and a half back then.
It was a go-year.
And that would have been AD20 or 90-10 now.
It used to be.
90-10.
Well, we can't fix what used to be, so we can only move forward with what is right now and plan for the future.
So I think you can learn from the past.
They're going to be cheaper.
No, it's never going to get cheaper.
So if we're on roads now on the CIP, now County Road 1, the super 2, is that just going to come out of maintenance budget the next time, or is that going to be a CIP project? And we've got to mill an overlay down.
If we mill an overlay, then by contractor, it'd be a CIP project.
Okay. And then my next question is, that little stretch of County Road 1 that goes to the industrial park, what are we going to do with that? Because it's not going to hold up with all the truck traffic going into the industrial park with the pet food plant, and we get no tax money off of that. So are we going, are we, has it lost its designation as a county route?
No.
It's still County Route 1?
Well, it's not, it's not County Route 1, but it is still a county road.
It's still a county road. I understand it, but I just, so they took the county, so we're not on hold for any County Route money?
No.
So...
It's an FAS route type.
It's still a RES or NSA. Okay, so is the city of Tom and Oxy applying for any grants for that?
No.
Because for the county, you can't, well, we're not going to rebuild that whole road to a super 2. I would hope not.
Well, there's, there was the raise grants available that we ended up partnering with Lansing and applying for the sewer extension down McIntyre, but at the same time, we contacted the city of Tom and Oxy to discuss a raise grant because they have additional Kansas Avenue on the gravel road portion. They have 80 acres or another 120 acres on the east side that's vacant that is owned by the city for the future development. And so the raise grant could have fit that criteria, but they didn't have the matching, we were going to match 50-50 with the matching funds that would be local contribution, but I don't believe that the city had the funding available to match the money at the time of the county, so...
Lansing did, and we still do.
We didn't get it, but...
So how are we going to deal with that? Because that road will fall apart. It already has.
I'd say it already has, pretty well fallen apart with the construction.
Just the construction.
Because it is, I don't know how many of the commissioners have driven that section of road, but we did pass some...
You spent a lot of money on it last year.
Well, we're going to spend probably another $60,000 or $75,000 this next year if we want to get it to where it's, or we're going to skip its maintenance and wait till it falls completely apart because it is in...
Take it back to gravel?
It is in poor, it is in poor condition.
When you, when you do that, when the industrial park comes in and gives 10 years tax abatement, and there's no tax money to fix that road, I'd say there's no tax money to fix the road.
So a question, I know we've talked about different, different projects. We've talked about the rules about having a benefit district established. Is there, is there a possibility, like that road, of forming right in that area with the pet food benefit district and then charging the folks that are in that area?
They don't want to pay taxes. They're not going to want to pay a benefit district.
Well, I don't know what the, what's the criteria of the rules? I don't... Well, I don't know, what the, what's the criteria of the rules, I, I don't, I'm not aware of that.
Yes.
Thanks, Mark.
That's a big, that's a big question.
Yeah, you, I mean, you can do benefit districts, cities do them all the time for roads, or sewer improvement, or stormwater. Yes, you can do a benefit district.
And would we be able to, I mean, we don't have to get permission from the, we, we can just impose it.
Well, I think this is something you need to work with the city of Tonganoxie with.
Well, I've never done all the rules.
It would be, keep in mind that anybody, any of the properties that benefit from the improvement have to share equally. So the vacant land across the street and, and farm ground or whatever would also be part of that. So, um, depending on how you allocate it, um, it could be pretty impactful to a piece of property that right now is farm ground.
But it's not.
So, so, yeah, that's why I said, yes, you can do it, but it, there's a lot of moving pieces there that you'd wanna take into consideration.
Sometimes if you do that, then the place that you thought was gonna develop will not develop until years down the road, because you have a benefit district set on it and the yearly cost.
Yeah, that, it's basically become, it's like a property tax, except that you don't get out from underneath a benefit district when it goes to a tax.
Right.
That, that money carries on, because it is.
Well, of course, the primary impact is hills, they're, they're impacting that road dramatically, I mean.
When we do projects in the county, that's why we do off-site improvements and impact fees, um, because we look at the roadway and say, hey, this road's not gonna hold up if you put this kinda traffic on it. Unfortunately, in this case, the project's in the city and they didn't, they didn't do anything for the county road on it. Uh, not saying that they had to, but it would've been nice if they would've addressed it as part of an impact fee on the developer and the people who are actually causing the road to fall apart.
If we did a benefit district, did we draw the lines or do we have the city to draw the lines or how to?
Well, a portion of it will be in the city limits, because it's the industrial park, so you would have to be some kind of a joint, uh, project.
Has to make a agreement.
It has, it has, hasn't been any discussion with the city of Tonganoxie about that road, I mean, there was some.
They wanted us to take care of it.
Well, I understand, they.
They want us to pay them.
Right, well, that's, I don't see that happening, I don't see where the money's coming from, because, uh.
That's why I'm asking about the benefit, we, we're gonna have to look at different, different sources.
Because when they open up, it's gonna fall apart.
You still have to weigh out, though, the benefit of the taxes, those sales and, 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 you know, future revenue.
Which, right now, we don't get anything from it, and it'll be ten years before I think the.
But they keep throwing seventy-five thousand dollars a year on it.
Yeah.
Well, hills, and it'd be interesting to visit with hills and see where they're at, uh, as far as if they're willing to participate.
It's always easier to get those kind of agreements before the project starts, a little harder after the.
Development agreement, one-on-one. Well, it's a, it's, it's a big issue, that's, that road is in bad shape.
Yep, and they spent a lot of money last summer on just patching it up.
And that traffic has a good county route one, so to your mill and overlay question, we had the cracking occurred, that we had additional testing on when we milled and overlaid that project in two thousand eighteen.
That's a recycled place.
Recycled place, we did not stop at the existing horizontal cracking and go all the way to the base. So, so those cracks have come back to the surface. That was a strange fix.
That's a huge, when you're talking about, when you're talking about local service, we can talk about one point four million.
Uh, one point four is in the special highway.
Special highway, yeah, that, that road just alone is gonna cost more than that, just pretty maintenance on it.
And then the other one, after bond payments, uh, the other, the other funds have approximately three and a half million dollars a year coming into the sales tax for bonds.
Mark, how far is the sales tax, I should know this, they, they set up spending so far.
Twenty thirty-seven.
But have we spent money on twenty thirty-seven?
Oh, the, well, the bond payments go clear out to twenty thirty-seven, so those don't, those don't fall off before.
Speaking of that, the two thousand six sales tax, there's some projects that didn't get completed on that sales tax, that the voters voted to get done. Are we ever gonna go back and make that right with the voters? I mean, we're, we're slowly doing it, uh, because the, it was Tonganoxie Road improved from Tonganoxie to Leavenworth, and then it was Fairmount Road and Tonganoxie Road on the K seven. And, uh, Fairmount Road's got a lot of traffic in that, uh, first mile or two there.
It's the third highest accident rate.
And it's already had an improvement done at a hundred forty-seventh street, and it's, it's a problem. But, uh, the Field of Dreams has got a lot of traffic on the weekends and during the week. It, you know, it almost needs a turn lane. So anyways, there's a lot of things, uh, you know, back in the two thousand six to sixteen sales tax, we got radios and a turnpike interchange. And now the turnpike interchange cost us a lot to maintain, I mean, with the County Road One, the super two, and now the industrial park. So we haven't got a return on our investment yet.
From a safety standpoint, as far as grant applications go, just so you guys are aware, the County Route Thirty, that we're applying for the cost share funding, is the highest accident rate location vehicles miles traveled, so vehicle miles traveled. So per mile traveled to the roadway isn't the highest instance, because the, the traffic volume's only two hundred and fifty cars a day at the time, or three hundred, you know, chart. But vehicles miles traveled, County Route Thirty's the most accident prone location. Actual accidents, we have a hundred a year between, uh, Leavenworth Road and Tonganoxie, on the city of Tonganoxie. So that whole stretch, the one we already got a grant for, and the next stretch has a hundred vehicles a day. And then the third location up to that is Fairmount Road, the first two miles west, past the Field of Dreams. And then after that, you're down on Golden Road at the curve, uh, when you turn north to go back up towards K thirty-two. So that's kind of our, from a safety perspective and grant applications, those are the locations that we have the possibility of getting grants. I'm extremely hopeful, you would think, that the state would fund S H fifty-four and S H sixty-one based upon, and I did meet, uh, get to meet the down to Pico with the Secretary of Transportation, and he said that he would speak to local projects about those, but he couldn't offer any guarantees, but he thought that they should be very well received at the state. But who knows, you know, we platform, could've, we could've been in construction at the same time that they're in construction and, because they wanted to open here, what is it, twenty-four or something? And so we could be closing that road for sixty-nine months, right after the plant is open, when all the new employees are trying to get down there.
So on the gravel highest, uh, traffic count, like a hundred eighty-seven, uh, now, who's the metro? Is, uh, that's County Road thirty-seven, is that eligible for any, uh, grants?
No.
Even off the county route?
It doesn't, well, we could, the only grant that, 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 any of these sections of roadway here are, aren't identified as the ten highest accident rate locations. So the only grants that we could apply for, for roadway improvement project is the Kansas Cost Share Program.
Okay, so traffic count, meaning it's gotta be accidents?
Well, it has to be accidents and it has to be an FAS identified route, and so they identified our highest ten in the local road safety plan, so we have to follow the highest ten.
And the match on that Kansas Cost Share changes?
Uh, it, there isn't a match amount at all, so they, we're going to apply for a million, they allow up to one point. I think, they change it every cycle, every six months when they open applications, but this cycle, they're allowing up to one million dollar applications. We're gonna apply for the full amount, uh, and they're statewide, they're only allocating eleven million dollars. And so that's a pretty small pool when you're looking at eleven million dollars. And then in the last cycle, albeit through the governor's office, five days before the election, only went to cities. And so, uh, they did not allocate any county projects statewide, and so I don't know what our opportunity is there. I know that, I mean, we've been told by the local KDOT officials that they rank County Route Thirty as the number one project before it went to the state governor's office for evaluation, but, uh, we're hopeful to get funding for it, but eleven million bucks doesn't improve our.
No.
It does not.
Not on a rock job.
Well, we only, we can only apply for millions. So like, when we did County Route Thirty, I, I can't remember, did we end up, we got the maximum allocation amount. That year, I think there was only seven million dollars available statewide, and they caved it at nine hundred thousand dollars per project, and they got the full nine hundred thousand. But, uh, yeah, they capped the amount, so you could build a ten million dollar project and they're still only gonna fund a million bucks of it.
What was the, what was the matching on a hundred fifty-eighth street?
It was about a third, so the total cost of that, I believe, was around three point two million, and we got nine hundred thousand, so twenty-five percent again.
I can remember, what was the name of that?
That was a cost share.
Cost share, yeah, that was.
So.
And that was on, it was designed sitting on the shelf, but.
One, one of the things that hurt us, is going to hurt us and what has prevented us from being, able to get funding for County Route Thirty, is that, uh, they considered the Stillwell Road project that the school district applied for, a county project. They even wanted the county to enter into an agreement with KDOT on behalf of the school district, since it was a county road. And we said, no, we, we have an agreement with base.
But the county didn't apply for it.
We didn't apply for it, we didn't even have knowledge of it.
Right.
And so.
So we got invited to go to the announcement.
I didn't even invite them.
I mean, so, so that, I mean.
That took away money from one of our projects. That took away, yeah, so they aren't going to fund any, at least through local projects, you're only truly eligible for funding every other cycle, like on the bridge programs, you usually never get it two cycles in a row. So you go ahead and apply, because you wanna have your cue card in a queue and say, hey, we applied last time, and this is, we're just applying to the same one. But, uh, but under that theory of that being a county project, we got a hundred fifty-eighth street and we got the Stillwell Road improvements, that they still haven't turned in testing for, the school district has failed to give the testing to have us accept that as a county road. I don't know what will become of that, they just, they, they walked away from it after they finished, so. But we have that project, it was, and so they counted out towards a county project. So this would be the first application that they would consider as eligible to fund it.
Now, with this regional transportation study, I'm not sure what the date is for finalizing that, but when that comes out, there'll be certain projects on that. Is that gonna, are they gonna be elevated on the list, you know?
Well, there are some county projects on there, that's where I came up with the County Route Thirty information that I'm gonna use in the cost share as far as vehicle miles traveled, crash accidents, so there will be a few county projects on there. Uh, but what there'll be a lot of is KDOT type projects, but KDOT now expects local, local entities to contribute to the cost of these projects. So they'll want us to do right-of-way acquisition for them, or they'll want us to do a ten percent match on their project and, and.
On state highway project?
Because it's intended.
And right now.
There's another unfunded mandate.
Kind of a pay-to-play situation. Yeah, it's a pay-to-play, so like, right now, if you look at, um, some of the projects, you've got, the governor's office is not talking to Missouri, Missouri's governor's office, nor is it ever getting a bipartisan agreement or by-state agreement in place for a bridge. K five realignments, seventy-five million dollars, so you're looking at seven million bucks, maybe more, that they'll ask us for. And they'll probably ask us to take over maintenance of everything north of McIntyre or something on top of that.
Wow.
I don't know. They aren't just fully funding projects, if you look at the Polk Quincy Bi-Duct, and you look at what was done in Salina, and you look at what was done in Kellogg Road, some of those, city county, and like the Turner Diagonal, West to the I program, those all had, some local funds contributed to them. And then some of them, like the Turner Diagonal and the Polk Quincy Bi-Duct, had federal funds as well, so if the county said, we'll put in ten percent, which would blow our CIP completely apart, because the funding, um, may be a bond situation or something, if we ever decided to do something.
Gotta make the payments.
Yeah, and so then, um, then you're looking at a totally different scenario. It'll prioritize the projects. With a whole bunch, they have a ton of data that they're gonna present to you here in a couple of weeks, and, and, that we'll see tonight for the first time.
Yep, it's tonight at Baser.
So, but they have, they have a huge amount of data, but, uh, that they're basing this on.
It's a pretty cool program that they've developed.
That spreadsheet that they have is amazing.
It is, we were looking at it yesterday in Port Authority, I mean, just the capabilities, and it was like, wow, I mean, it is amazing. And then you guys have added, asked to have a couple more components added.
Yeah.
We needed that a long time ago.
Yeah, and to get to the table, they're gonna want us to help contribute, so like, in October this year is the con, the first console that will have a regional transportation plan, which puts us in place to, whatever project is being identified as the top project in the county, if we want to go and present that to, we, we should go present it, even if we have no money to contribute, at the political consult meeting with KDOT. If we have any local support for the project and get it out there, but that'll be in October. And so you get three minutes to speak, and the successful groups usually have about four speakers, and they pick you back off each other off of one PowerPoint.
And they've been there, yeah.
And, and you go and present it, but.
Like getting an IHOP to answer you.
So we have, we'll have, we also have the, the Safety Streets for All Grant that we got, which is three hundred and twenty thousand dollar study, which is going to mirror the local road safety plan that the county got. Uh, but the local road safety plan did not qualify us for federal implementation grants, because it did not include benefit cost analysis and it did not include socioeconomic, uh, demographic information for the community. It is in the regional transportation plan, but that's just a whole nother plan that hasn't even started, that's gonna require a kind of. But to be eligible for any federal funding, we had to do it.
Have to have.
And fortunately, we got a grant to pay for it.
And we got a grant.
And the state ma, the state covered our match, right?
Half.
Half of our. So we were paying ten percent, so the federal grant's eighty, the state's paying ten, and we're paying ten. And the city of Leavenworth is also doing one, and so, uh, we'll have that study as well, but that'll include more projects. We can get these projects, because it won't be limited to, uh, federal aid roads. If we can, like in the local road safety plan, they would not allow you to include gravel roads without fatality, with harp, high fatality numbers. They had to be FAS routes and they had to be harsh service. And so, uh, we can include some of these high-traffic areas in that other plan, but I don't know, I'm, I'd say we're two years from that.
So on your basic, what you're basically asking for, to get us up to speed just on the bridges alone, if we left the CIP completely in place, are you saying one point two million additional per year?
Well, if we want to replace three a year on average.
And what, and is that, is that what you, you believe is necessary, or?
I don't think, three's still gonna put you behind.
Well, but.
Really, we should be efficient. It, it, I mean, it's depending upon your guys' position, if we funded an additional one point two million to get to two point six, then you're looking at, the average bridge cost now is probably eight hundred to one point three thou, one point three million dollars. And so at two point six, you're guaranteeing two bridges a year, some years you can do three. At one point four million, you're getting one to one and a half bridges per year done over the long, over the long haul. Through this CIP, because we're allocating some market funds towards it, and we have some grants in place, we would average over the next five years a little over two bridges.
One question for you, um, you know, I know we said we kept the twin bonded out to, countywide sales tax bonded out to what, twenty thirty-five, thirty-seven?
Twenty thirty-seven.
But each, each year, we receive more than we do in the past on the countywide sales tax.
Yes.
Now, where does that money go to offset some of these things?
It, all, all the sales tax money goes into the CIP. So it's either, it's either through bond payments or through funding the project.
And what's been the average of the increase on the countywide sales tax that we've gotten up to prevent it?
Well, historically, yeah, historically, our sales tax increased about three point four percent, historically. The last couple of years, it's increased more than that.
And there was a resolution to bond up to forty million on that tax, right?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head, I think, um.
It's forty million.
I think it was.
We could bond up to forty million and we're at thirty-some, thirty-two.
You know, I never favor, I, I, I never favor issuing bonds because you're just.
No, I know, I'm just saying, there was a resolution passed before I got here.
I think the first ten million was spent on projects other than roads.
That's why I was asking about the additional funding coming in every year from the sales tax, if we could plug back into that, do we take that into account when we're trying to offset some of these bridges?
Not the bridges, because the sales tax only goes to road improvement projects, and so.
Yeah, so.
It, it is accounted for, like you can see, we're projecting four point eight-nine and then we project five point six, five point eight-eight.
And that showing the increase that we planned?
Based on our financial advisor.
So what we spent was, uh, ten million dollars industrial parks, McIntyre one hundred forty-seven, and also Eisenhower, and a few other projects, but that were the biggies.
Yeah, it quit.
It aged up quick and we did not, did not want to do the full forty million.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, is it like a hundred million it's supposed to bring in?
I think that's right.
Yeah. But you don't want to spend it all in the first ten years and then just make the bank.
But you want to do the projects you promised to do.
Well, you don't want to, and we did, we did everything.
Not talking about before that.
I know, but two thousand and six to sixteen, there's some projects hanging out there that the voters voted to pass that sales tax for. I know they blamed oh eight hitting and everything else, but, uh, we got railroads and the turnpike interchange.
But the key to that stuff is, there was a promise made, as you know, to voters, and that's what they voted on, so not to be able to complete the projects that we said before you were here, or anybody was gonna.
I feel bad about it because it's in our, it's in our.
It's been done in our lap.
It's been done in our lap, I think it needs to be a plan to finish out that, but given that, there's no money.
Yeah, I know that.
And extra funds. And just like a family, sometimes you have the best plans, but, uh, now vacation's canceled.
So I think, um, again, we've had a lot of discussion here on what the CIP is, what's on currently on the CIP, um, the, we just started to touch a little bit on what the shortfall of, of this is. One, um, you identified like the culverts, we don't have them in the CIP because we don't have money to put them in the CIP. Um, the bridges, we have them in the CIP, but we don't have them at a rate that will keep up with the current failure, and all these things come from deferred maintenance. So forty years ago, they decided to not set aside enough money to do this, and it, it compounds, just like interest compounds on your investments, hopefully when the stock market's doing well, uh, the cost of things compounds on you as well, so like we pointed out, some of these projects were a million dollars twenty years ago, are now five, six million dollars. So it, it compounds, plus, it, it, and I'm no engineer, so I will do my best to explain, asphalt and roads, once they hit a certain threshold, they start degrading faster. So if you maintain them like you should, they'll last longer, but if you don't, they, they degrade faster, so, you know, bridges just need to be replaced, there's, the maintenance that, that needs to be done on them is being done, but they just need to be replaced. They should have been being replaced on a little, a faster pace than what we're currently doing, and it's, it's all about finance, right? We, we have this amount of money, that's how we created the CIP, the Board of County Commissioners decides, are we gonna put more money into the CIP and escalate up the, the, um, replacement schedule on some of these bridges? Or do we want to put more money into the CIP to do more road projects and keep our fingers crossed on some of these bridges? That's the, the question now that we're really getting to on the CIP is, as we, yeah, as we prepare the budget, and that's what this, this, that's what this gets us to, do we stay with what we've been doing? Or do we start to put more money into this CIP so that we can start to, and, and I'm not even gonna say catch up, it's just keep from falling further behind.
That's the thing is, is because what we're, I mean, and it's not gonna get cheaper, every time we delay, every time we put something off, every time we kick it down the road, the, the cost of doing it, as we've said.
It, it goes up and it becomes more catastrophic in nature, it's a reactionary, this road has fallen apart, this bridge has been closed.
Bridges to me is a priority, because when, when you don't have good structure, a structure with roads and bridges, then nothing else can grow. And so the bridges, what, what I'm saying here, in my opinion, is just one kind of, is they my priority?
And the culverts as well, because.
They're the same, they fail, they fail.
You know, when they fail, a road is closed.
I know.
I think a year ago, it, it was more than a year ago, Bill, it was probably two years ago when we came in and we identified what real funding should be for road and bridges, you remember that number was like four and a half million more than what we're currently putting in? If we really wanted to fund them adequately to get back on, on pace, and everybody here understand and realize that's not feasible.
Right.
So we're trying to slowly get back there and, um, the CIP is the first step in that. Before you, before you can decide how much you need to set aside, you need to know where you're at, and I think Bill's done a really good job of getting that established, so then the next step is, again, we just keep doing what we've been doing, we're gonna be right where we were and where we are right now, except for it'll escalate, or can we, do we start putting more money into this? And if so, that's the, the policy side of this, that we really need good direction, as we prepare, uh, the budget for road and bridge and, uh, the CIP and the, for the coming year, what direction should we take from the board?
And it's not, oh, there's not even a, uh, you know, we're not getting from A to Z here, we're, we're, we're making a necessary investment. Bridges don't fall apart and, and, but, but you can't, gotta take kind of baby steps here, but one point four million, then trying to find that in these budgets, that's gonna be hard.
Well, I said a month ago, we're in, before it's all said and done, we're gonna be closing some roads because the bridges have failed, and I mean, I, I can guarantee you we are. Some of these bridges that have failed are, it's stuff that the county built out of used material, we used, used ivies.
The other part that we need to know to talk about compounding issues, um, in, in conjunction with this, to get to that one point four million dollars that we're currently allocating towards, it is important to point out that we've reallocated money because we had some surplus funds at the time in about twenty twenty-one in the equipment reserve transfer line item, and so we took money from that fund and put it towards projects because we were so far behind on bridges at the time. But that is not sustainable, as you know, the cost of a dump truck has gone from a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy thousand to three hundred.
So now you have to replace a truck that you should have been able to pay for, but you don't have the money to pay for it because you spent it somewhere else, which is insane.
And we're still in, we're still okay there, but we cannot continue to take that transfer out, that transfer has to go back to where it was intended for. We just, we used it as a Band-Aid for a year, maybe two, but it has to go back, or we will get to the point where then it will be, we may be able to replace that bridge, but we can't replace that dump truck.
It's just, that money comes from just an amortization schedule on the equipment replacement, it's not just some magic fund you decide to put in, it's, it's a program that, uh, whatever the piece of equipment costs, you amortize it over the lifetime and it's in there.
We, we do this, the exact same downstairs, working with Frank, I, I work through this exact same process on all of our equipment countywide because we do the fleet management now. And so we do a lot of it through enterprise, but we have the same, as well as this capital improvement plan, we have a equipment improvement plan or a maintenance, maintenance plan. And in this case, we, in twenty twenty-three, there was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted for equipment in the depreciation schedule. And in previous year, we had ran the numbers and we were at about eight hundred and fifty thousand is what we needed to do to maintain the current equipment added to depreciation schedule, but that was prior to some of these huge increases in leasing, and so we do have some deferred costs from the leasing, uh, because we traded in owned vehicles on leases, so the greater operating cost was down and we can operate these graders at an annual fee equal to the cost of ownership, which is good, but there is a deferred, you know, there was what, three point two million dollars, I believe, in equipment reserve, which was plenty at the time, but we've probably already deferred a million dollars of that towards bridges, and we are going to have to at some point address that as well. Deferring, you know, whether we want to set aside another one point three, one point four million dollars or whatever towards bridges, we are also going to have to address equipment to maintain the current equipment.
We have to stop making that transfer and keep it in equipment.
The last time there was a mill levy increase was two thousand and sixteen, it was before I got here, the roof on the Justice Center needed to be replaced and they had no money, they did not, uh, amortize that or depreciate it, we'll just call it, that's a tax thing, they did not depreciate the roof, so they had to raise the mill levy a half a mil to pay to fix that roof. And the mill levy, that's the last time there was a mill increase at this county, hasn't been one since I've been here, that was two thousand and seventeen when I came.
Oh, your budget, like, because we've had valuations in your budget, uh, I believe your budget was up last year, what, one point two million, I can't remember what the exact amount was. Is that about right?
Sounds about right.
And so, we're actually talking here, if we added another, we're talking that it would go up.
Well, at one point, with the one point two million dollar increase, we ended the year with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
That's too close.
And that is coming in on fumes, uh.
Fingers crossed, no so.
Yeah, so like, for instance, Delani has been here for twenty-seven years or something, and in her entire tenure, it was, there has only been one other time to be paying in at about that amount from the year. So I always try to, we always try to do as much as we possibly can, but at some point, you've got to, so the snow and the fuel and the cost of everything, but we're looking at gravel costs increase, oil costs increase, rock costs increase, so if you want to keep up with the cost of inflation and not reduce services, you're going to have to keep up at a commodities increased cost, and commodities increased cost is not the same as a cost of living increased cost because commodities tend to go up at a faster rate generally than gravel, gravel, oil, gravel, oil and salt. Salt stayed pretty flat and asphalt stayed fairly good, I think, it was pretty stable, but oil went up and gravel went up and fuel went way up, and so, and equipment.
Lubricants went way up.
Filters.
Hydraulic oil, motor oil, all that stuff, guys use a lot.
So, so I would say from our commodities perspective.
Tires, tires have went up a lot.
We probably had a twenty percent increase in costing commodities.
And that was something that the board needed to hear.
And that exceeds.
And that's just, that's just to stay even, right, that's not putting more into these problems, that's just to keep from sliding backwards.
I just wanted to kind of.
Right, good point, very good point.
And one thing that we're going to have to look at is haydite, so haydite's the preferred product by far for chip and seal. But we're gonna spend one point three million dollars or one point one million dollars, or, you know, over a million dollars this year to give the necessary amount of haydite. Well, haydite's obviously a very finite commodity because it's only made in one location in Missouri and availability of that is getting harder and harder to get here. We hadn't been a long-term customer of that facility, we wouldn't be getting it now, and that lady who we have that relationship with, that's their manager of that facility, is retiring. And so, um, she gave us a price break this past year that I don't know, um, that we'll see again, I mean, I think she took five dollars off per yard, uh, which is almost ten percent of the cost, about seven, eight percent of the cost of the material after we complained of the significant increase, but I don't foresee that continuing, it is owned by Summit, Ham's Gores, and I do not foresee that happening in the future, so we should expect if we want to continue to use haydite on our chip and seal roadways, which is a superior product to limestone, wash rock, mine lot, uh, we should expect that cost to increase. Or maybe switch to granite, but then you have to use more oil because you gotta fill the voids in the haydite.
We want to do, haydite works, it's not broken, doesn't need fixed, so, I mean, it works great.
I know, I know we do it when it comes to different things, snow, it's like, do we, and maybe this doesn't work, maybe it's not apples to apples, but do we work, uh, any other local penalties to cost share on any of this kind of product as far as a, there's a.
We do the salt, we do it for everybody.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about other things, but it is seem feasible to do that.
Well, salt's about the only thing that we use, that they use, because the cities don't do any of their own chip and seal, they contract it, and so they don't buy oil, they don't buy chip and seal. Uh, we bid our fuel every time we, uh, the tanks get filled up, so I don't know that, and they don't use gravel, and so, uh.
We're pretty low with the oil, we can pick that up.
Really, it's just salt, it's just salt, really.
And then even the state contracts, that we done, uh, go through the state procurement, a lot of times, we get a lot cheaper by not going through that.
Usually you can bid it better.
Yeah, we've already got location here, probably beneficial counties out west.
So we know we're not gonna be able to fund like this dream plan, but if we fund what you were asking for, the one point two or one point three, whatever it is, is, is that gonna get us headed in the right direction as far as your, what's wrong?
Well, two things, one, obviously I work at the pleasure of the Board of County Commissioners, so I'm just notifying you of the situation, I'm not asking for your money necessarily, but it is, I'm identifying, I'm identifying the problems and saying that we have this, and if we want to get to an average and stay at this.
And we're still kicking the can on, down the road, with what you're quite sure.
If we want to work at two mil, if we want to work at two bridges a year, guaranteed two bridges a year, we need to allocate an additional, probably at least one million dollars or one point two to one point four, depending if you want to do two or four, and how many you're gonna do, and that's not getting your culverts really in there anywhere, and that's.
Or we'll have to probably come back and we just.
And then that's also not accounting for the three hundred eighty-five thousand that we're currently only allocating towards equipment that needs to, the eight hundred fifty thousand dollar number is probably one point two million now.
But you're not gonna continue, I mean, now.
No, that's gotta, that's gotta move out, but what he's saying is then that makes a bigger hit to the roads and bridges, yeah, we have, we have to stop probably this year because of the, the cost, we need to stop taking money from the equipment.
You have to replace it.
Putting in roads, that needs to stop.
Which takes your one point four down to at least nine hundred thousand, and so, um, because honestly, with the cost of, of increase of equipment over the last two years, that.
Eight hundred fifty thousand.
Probably, probably two million, just to be where, just is the next step, I mean, really, it's an additional two million dollars, that allows us to, to maintain our transferring to equipment,
get that back to where, close to where it needs to be, and continue with the two bridges per year.
So what, I mean, what I'm trying to get is you figure what, what number you're looking at, and then we're gonna have to find where that's gonna come from. But are we, are we in agreement that that's what we're on?
No, you gotta, you gotta do the bridge here, we do two, the last seven, five years.
But is the number two, is that the number two million?
And two more.
Well, I think you have to, again, like we talked about, there's a, there's a, there's the number that it should be if we wanted to stay ahead of everything and get caught up, and then there's somewhere in between that and zero, right? So, um, two million dollars, I think, is what, uh, is, is a fair target, but that may not be palatable to the Board of County Commissioners, so you all set, we'll set that policy, but we're putting you on alert that this is where we're at.
And we have some thinking.
Oh, oh, no, I've already looked at some of this, but that's why I said we're gonna have to eventually close the road, and then, well, you know how that works, don't you, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I've been close for about a year, Jeff, or.
And we had entirely identified.
Yeah, I remember that.
Well, and I'm really concerned that there's two roads that would be probably the first two if we didn't, if we say ran into a situation, the Jamison Road, which comes, the gravel road comes out on both ends, that road with the concrete arch structure, but then the other two, really four structures that we do have in the CIP are Golden Road and with the increase of the population potential down in that southern portion of the county in the DeSoto Plan, you're looking at, at, and even without that, you're looking at a pretty major connection between K ten and K nine.
I was real surprised you can't get money for that.
They're not sharing, they don't work and play well.
Well, all their money is going into a certain project.
No, I know, it ain't come to us.
It's in that area, so I, they would be.
We're not gonna give up on that.
And just worth noting, because you probably are familiar with the old local projects, application process, under previous administrations, the local projects. Under previous administrations, the local projects department reviewed all your applications and scored them and awarded the funding. Now they score them and it goes to the governor's office for review and it is announced through the governor's office. So it is no longer simply a, it's not, no longer simply a K-dot process, it is an administrative.
Political.
Political process.
I think you go down to the school for the big announcement.
I didn't get the last second.
I didn't even know.
That was the last second.
I found out in the morning.
Well, that's not what we're here to discuss, so let's, let's circle back around and let's talk about what our next steps are and then we can get this closed.
I think it's pretty clear that it's, it would be difficult to add new projects to the CIP that aren't already anticipated. There's just not the funding for it. That's, that's bottom line there. We will, as we prepare the budget, we'll give you some alternatives, but again, I think reasonable is somewhere in that 2 million dollar range. And that's a lot and we know it.
And when we say 2 million dollar range, if, if we're looking at like last year's budget where just to stay even, it went up 1.2 million, you're talking that 2 million's on top of that.
That's correct.
If we're buying 3.2 million.
Potentially.
Potentially, but we, that's, that's where we come in and we're going to have to work through that.
The, the threshold, again, the pain threshold for the commissioners, that's what we're talking about.
I'm feeling a little thing.
Well, it's, you're going to have plenty of time to give some consideration, looking at what you think.
I'd be a lot more than.
Does anybody?
He's going to eat some more doughnuts.
I'm trying to be proactive here, is anyone support reaching out to the city of Tonga and Oxy and seeing what their plan is on that little stretch? If they think we're going to do it or?
I can reach out to them, but I kind of know what it is. Because they have come to me and requested that the county.
Well, and they asked in that process before, we were discussing the carryover and things, that came up. I mean, and when that was, that was, that's kind of come.
Well, I mean, it's going to be coming, I mean, we just need to have a plan, somebody needs to have a plan in place. Whether the Port Authority is going to pay for it or the City of Tonga is going to pay for it.
I guess I, I, I mean, I wish they were, I'm talking about the city of Tonga and Oxy, I wish they were willing to explore. At least look into the benefit of this area or all of this.
And I think the Port Authority needs to kind of begin to look a little bit because, you know, they own the.
Well, I'm just saying, you can't expect us to do it. We did the Super 2.
Yeah, I don't know that we would, they asked to fund all of it, I don't know, I don't know, I really don't know.
Well, I know, it's coming, it's coming and you know it's coming.
I just know that that discussion came up already, it already came up early, several years ago.
Right.
And they've requested, the, the city of Tonga and Oxy has requested that we upgrade that road.
They've, they've, they've notified us that they'd really like to see it overly by county staff prior to the facility opening.
But that's still not going to hold up.
No, it'll come apart, it'll go for six months.
Pretty expensive Band-Aid you'd be putting on it.
The bases.
Right, it needs to be a total rehab.
Or maybe we need a. Yeah, I don't know what we need to do.
I don't know, we can look at alternatives.
And just all the last.
I think it was chip and, didn't you just chip and seal it to start with? It was a gravel road that we chip and sealed, right, and we just started overlaying.
No, no.
I thought it was.
No, that was the original County Route 1.
Okay, that's right.
That was the original County Route 1 that came out, that turned Kansas Avenue, yeah.
Yeah, but it was chip and sealed.
No, it was all chip seal, yeah.
County Route 1 was originally a chip and seal.
Yeah, yeah, with very little basin, very.
There's a problem.
Because the coring showed.
Nobody wanted.
It didn't connect to the interstate at that time.
Well, the coring indicated that there was only maybe four inches of gravel underneath it or something. Because it was chip and seal and then had been overlaid twice in the last 40 years.
One time, yeah, they closed the bridge down by Reno and they made that the detour road and stayed overlaid it back in the 70s, late 70s.
Well, and I tell you what they say, and I, and I, it's pretty persuasive to a point, is they say this is the largest industrial development that we've had in Longwood County.
That's not paying any taxes for 10 years.
But, but it's going to benefit the county, it's going to benefit people. So they're saying that, this is the argument of the city, is like, the county paving that road would benefit everyone.
It's not just paving, it's a total tear out rebuild. And you almost need to get the access from Kansas Avenue back to the state highway.
Since the governor's office was so involved with getting that down here, maybe they can help us get that funded.
I'm just saying, if there's funding out there, somebody needs to be trying to get it.
I'll go talk to them.
Well, there's going to be another cycle of raised grants that we could apply for, but still, that's not the CIP and the city has on that opportunity.
Can we put that in the CIP only as, like we did 158th Street, that if we would obtain a grant funding, then we would consider it? Like we did 158th Street?
Well, if there's any improvement, I would hope that if the county contributed any funds, if there was a grant and we had to contribute a little, that we could turn that over to the city.
At this point, we put it, they'll put it on the CIP, I think we just keep it on our radar and see what we can do to.
I think we need to do some talking about it.
I do, because that's coming.
But we have enough, I think, on our plate for the CIP right now to, instead of adding anything additional. So I think that that, that's, that's like we've moved things before. We have, you know, said, okay, we got this funding, we have this in place, we can shift it now up into a, you know.
Well, that's what we did with 158th, it went way down.
Right, so I said it went way up, so I think.
But it was on there.
Right.
That's where we.
It was out here, it was on there three years, 2002 also, Mark.
And I think that we've probably gone over everything that we need from Bill, correct?
I will say one additional thing about County Route 30, just to preface the conversation. That was obviously designed originally prior to me starting, it was part of a three or four road project that Wilson designed. It was designed originally to be a chip and seal roadway, not a pavement, not a full pavement cross section. So we requested after I started in 2020 that they upgraded, they did that at no additional cost. Now, in that cross section design, they did, we did borings to see how much rock was there, they claim there's not that much rock. You can clearly see there's a lot of rock. But the borings did not go into a full geotechnical evaluation of the roadway. And so just know going into County Route 30 that we may have a conversation about cement treated base. And in 158th Street, we had that conversation, it's kind of a difficult conversation. We allocated 300,000 of that, we only did the areas that we necessarily needed it, which we only ended up spending 178,000 of that, 300,000 dollars for the various cement treated base locations. But we are, in my opinion, we didn't design future projects like this, but with the plans in place, I think we are money ahead by obliging the inspection firm and the county and the contractor to identify any locations if any do arise and to treat those bases as, we can put it as a contingency fee upfront, knowing that we don't have that as part of the project. And when you look at the borings that are womed clays in that boring, the greasy type material that you end up needing some cement treated bases on. But it may not be the entire project, so we don't want to just say, let's cement treat this base, it's been 400,000 dollars, when we could spot do it like 147th, might be 158th, but it is not part of the project, it was never part of the project. And we canceled, and we paid Wilson good money to design Eisenhower and we had severe issues with the elevation bust on there. And they covered the cost of it. But we did cancel the other two road contracts that were in a previous CIP discussion. So the County Route 30 was the only surviving project of the group that was originally designed.
I think that we can address that when the time comes.
I just want to make sure, it's not reflective of my numbers, so.
Still considered diggable rock.
Yeah, they claim it is.
There's no way that's going to be diggable rock.
We're going to have, we're going to bid it as unclassified excavation, so hopefully we can fight to have a fight with the contractor when the time comes.
Well, I just, don't be surprised if there's some change orders, I guess.
Okay, well, I think that we can kind of wrap this up.
I think so.
We'll chat with Bill afterward or. But I've got, I've got KCAT a meeting I need to get prepared for and taken care of. So if there isn't anything else in the session that matters for the CIP, then I think we can.
Thank you, Matt Chair.
Thank you very much, have a great afternoon.